Welcome to the October 13th, 2022 in-depth city council meeting. Tonight, we are having some technical difficulty for everybody at home, so we are troubleshooting it right now, and we would recommend going on MPW's station, channel two.
Yeah, it's only if you're on GoToMeeting, so if you're looking at joining us through GoToMeeting, please go to the YouTube channel or channel two.
Cindy, can you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Graylet.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
President.
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 Thank you. Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have four discussion items, and the first one is a presentation on Fire Department Explorer Program. Welcome.
Good evening. Because this past week was Fire Prevention Week, kind of fits that we talk about one of the programs we have over at the Fire Department, and it's my distinct pleasure this evening to introduce firefighter Ben Barrett. Now, the Explorer Program, he's going to explain what we have now, but just so you know, it's been a program we've had for probably the last 20 years, kind of off and on. One really nice thing about the program and how it fits what we do as a department is its community outreach. And quite honestly, the more we interact with the community, the more we can spread that fire safety message, and honestly, the more persistent messages once we're not there. So that's a very big piece of what we do with that. Another aspect of the Explorer Program is it does act as a tool for recruiting and retaining our members. There are quite a few, and again, Ben will talk about a lot of this, but being able to work with youth and get them inspired and excited about our profession is kind of a magical thing. So with that, firefighter Ben Barrett, he's been with the Fire Department since 2019 before he joined us. He has been and still is a volunteer firefighter. He was in Hills and Mount Vernon and most recently West Branch. But the big reason why Ben is here tonight is he is our Explorer Advisor, so he's the one that kind of runs the whole program. And with that, Ben, come on up.
Thank you for having me and my explorers tonight. Like Assistant Chief said, I'm head advisor of Explorer Post 911 here in town. So some of the history behind the program, it started in the 30s as a senior scouting program through the Boy Scouts of America. It evolved into the first coed program of its kind, and it's a career-oriented program that we know it as today. So our program's a work-based, career-oriented program. They get hands-on training. We have seven members, and we meet twice a month from 7:00 to 9:00. We alternate our fire and medical training, and we also incorporate team-building exercises. So we started off our program with patient assessments on our medical nights. So members were introduced to taking vital signs on patients, being able to recognize medical conditions, illnesses, and injuries. We're also trained on basic first aid. Throughout the program, they've taken online courses for Stop the Bleed. It is a national campaign on controlling emergency hemorrhage, and they are CPR certified through the American Heart So we're working with the Eastern Iowa Community College for those that are 17 years or older to get their EMT, and that would meet our minimum standards for entry-level position with the City of Muscatine as firefighter. So some of the fire training that we've done, we've done search and rescue. The group is instructed on victim removal from structures and different drag techniques. They've also done fire-ground ladders and fire-ground operations, containment and extinguisher fires, and life safety on the fire ground. Some of the ladder training that we've done is effectively deploy and work off-ground ladders on the fire ground. We've done hose deployment. That's one of the most important jobs on the fire ground, is getting the hose off the truck and onto the fire, and also loading it onto trucks so we can deploy effectively. We've had them do rope rescue operations. They learned basic fire-ground knots, rigging for lowering and raising of victims and rescuers. And they also had the opportunity to do some repelling from our training tower. So got a lot of pictures of this. If they had it their way, they'd probably do it every night, so. Some of the upcoming training opportunities that we're going to have, we're going to do fire extinguisher training where it's live fire, and live fire means we basically have a pan that they'll be able to put out with the fire extinguishers that have been donated for this purpose. We'll also do forcible entry. We just got a brand-new prop this year we have down at Station 2, and they'll be able to use specialized firefighting tools to force doors and gain entry into structures. So looking forward to the future of our program. We're going to be doing ride-along. They'll have the opportunity in the near future to schedule ride-along shifts with the Fire Department to get real-world experience working in the field and observe daily operations of the firehouse. It'll be a great way to gain exposure for a possible career choice. We're also working with command staff on adding them to our second alarms, is when we call back off-duty staff on working structure fires. I'm on a volunteer department, and we use local high school students in a cadet program, and they help us all through the day. So I think it'd be a good thing for them. And some of the things we're looking forward to in the program, right now, it's kind of advisor-led, and we're going to be switching over and getting them some leadership skills, and they'll be able to vote on youth leaders, and they'll come up with their own mission statements, core values, and SOPs, and they'll kind of be running themselves at that point. So, but we'll continue on with all that stuff and keep recruiting from the high schools as we go. And with that, any questions?
Any comments, Council? Yes, sir?
Is there an age limit to some of the high-risk training that you're doing?
So, no, we do 14 through 21, and there is a lot of rules that we don't, obviously, let them go into burning structures or even overhauling structures. So they're not exposed to any carcinogens or safety stuff like that. They do have limits, our ladder training, we had to keep them six foot off the ground, so we're safe like that, and there's a few other rules that we have to abide by.
Well, I was thinking of like the repelling.
Repelling, yeah.
Is there an age limit to that?
No. So the Boy Scouts of America, they do a COPE course, and you have to be 14 for that. So that's the lower limit.
I have a comment.
You bet.
Question.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's in the program here yet or what you want to talk about, but I'd like to have your explorers introduce themselves.
Absolutely.
And tell me the very most educational yet fun activity that they do.
Absolutely.
If you don't mind.
You want to introduce yourself?
Go ahead.
I'm Ava Acker.
So, yeah, just answer your question.
I think, like, the CPR was very cool, and now I know how to do it, so that's awesome.
Yeah, that's great.
And repelling was really cool, too. I was really scared at first, but...
Night-and-day difference from the first time she went down to the second time.
I'm Riley Norwood, and I think one of the most fun things that we did was the Stop the Bleed program. It was really interesting to see the different ways that we would help someone who's bleeding, and I learned a lot from it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you, guys, and the chief would like a picture up front. That's all right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Next, we'll have a presentation on Code Enforcement Services. Welcome, Mr. Fangman.
All right, Mayor, Council. Tonight's presentation will give an overview of the city's code enforcement services with focus on the types of property condition code enforcement for which the city can ultimately abate the nuisance directly. Property conditions are regulated in city code to prevent and remedy property conditions that are injurious to the health, indecent, or unreasonably offensive to the senses, or an obstruction to the free use of property to essentially interfere unreasonably with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property, and that's the overall definition of a nuisance set forward in state and city code. Kind of tying in what we're doing here with the city's adopted strategic plan, the strategic plan creates a goal of creating more vibrant neighborhoods, specifically stating, "Enhance and improve the vitality of our community core gateways, including the Grandview Avenue Corridor, Park Avenue Corridor, riverfront, and downtown areas to support a thriving economy, vibrant neighborhoods, and a high quality of life and place. Addressing vacant and nuisance properties to create new opportunities for housing to support..." Addressing vacant and nuisance properties to create opportunities for housing and to support a vibrant community is a specifically identified strategy for achieving this goal within the strategic plan. Code enforcement services is one of the most impactful and direct tools the city has to achieve this desired outcome. One of the most significant aspects of code enforcement is the enforcement of property conditions. Regulations are set forth in city code. There's basically three broad categories of property conditions that code covers. There are the nuisance regulations, weed and vegetation regulations, and finally, the requirement for adjoining property owners to clear snow and ice from public sidewalks. The city employs two full-time code enforcement officers who are with us here tonight, who in addition to responding to property condition complaints, are also tasked with doing rental housing inspections. In a typical year, around 1,500 rental and housing inspections are performed. Most rental properties pass on the second inspection, but there's a subset of rental properties that require three or four inspections before they're found to be in compliance with the rental code. So the property conditions code is done in the time that remains after that. In a typical year, code enforcement officers respond to about 1,700 property condition complaints. As there are 9,275 individual parcels of land within the City of Muscatine, which parcels get inspected for property conditions violations has to be prioritized. Highest priority is placed on inspecting parcels upon which a violation is believed to exist that could endanger life, health, or safety. The next highest priority is placed on investigating complaints reported by the general public. To maintain fairness and consistency, if an inspection finds that a violation exists on a parcel, the nearby parcels are also inspected for any potential violations, and lowest priority would be anything that doesn't fit into those three categories. City code requires that the adjoining property removes snow and ice from the public sidewalk within 24 hours of the end of a snow and ice event. Enforcing this requirement is one of the critical code enforcement activities. In doing so, in a typical year, we issue about 115 snow or ice removal notices. They average about 57.5% for a voluntary compliance rate, which leaves about 49 that we have done by the city contractor. In an average year, there's about 17 properties on the full-time snow and ice removal list. These are properties where there's been repeated and consistent failure to clear the snow and ice, and so when the property's put on this list, the contractor is just directed to go ahead and clear that without any further action. Kind of just giving kind of an overview of how the enforcement process works. The enforcement process actually starts with an annual publication in the Muscatine Journal of a Notice of the Duty of Property Owners to Remove Snow and Ice. Then, 24 hours after the end of a snow event, initial inspections for compliance begins. When a violation is found, the adjoining property is notified and given 24 hours to remove the snow from the sidewalk. After the expiration of this deadline, a reinspection to determine compliance is performed. At that point, if it remains unshovelled, the city contractor is directed to clear the sidewalk. The owner is then invoiced for the cost charged to the city to perform this work, plus a $25 administrative fee. If after the second invoice, this balance remains unpaid, this amount due is presented to city council. Council then acts on a resolution authorizing the invoice amount plus the $50 administrative fee to be assessed against the property. The county then adds their own administrative fee for assessment. The specialist assessment is then treated as property tax due. If not paid, the property go to tax sale, the proceeds of which would reimburse the city for the cost of abatement. Moving on to weed and vegetation management. Weed and vegetation management regulations include such things as required trimming of grass, removal of dead or diseased trees, the trimming of vegetation obstructing street or sidewalks, and the duty to remove noxious weeds. In the May of this year, you guys completed a comprehensive overhaul, so I won't belabor that too much. This is another vital role of code enforcement. In an average year, we issue about 575 notices based on the weed and vegetation management regulations. The average compliance rate here is about 77%, so that's a lot better than snow and ice, which leaves about 132 in a typical year that get contracted out. And kind of similar to the permanent snow and ice removal list, we have a full-time list for those properties where they repeatedly aren't. Typically, these are the properties that are vacant and/or abandoned, so. The process for the enforcement of weed and vegetation management regulations is very similar to the snow and ice removal, with the big difference being that typically five days is given to comply for most weed and vegetation management violations, except for tree-related ones, 10 days is given typically. And then just to kind of give a sense of what these look like, got a set of pictures. Here's, these two properties are properties where there's multiple and severe violations of our regulations. Obviously, another very common one is where people have just let the whole yard grow eight, over eight inches, which is the standard. Then another very common one is where there's small patchy areas or rock beds or stuff that are allowed to overgrown with weeds. That's something we commonly run across. City code requires that sidewalks and streets be kept clear of obstructing vegetation. Pictured here are two violations of this requirement. The final part, we'll touch on vegetation, is pictured here are two scenarios in which the city code would require the picture tree to be cut down. The tree on the left is completely rotten and has a hollow trunk, and so is therefore a danger. The tree on the left is an ash tree that has been fatally infested with the Emerald Ash Bore, and for that reason needs to come down. Unfortunately, in the past few years, we've been, there's been a lot of those, which is no surprise to anyone. So I'm not going to read the state code definition of nuisance again, but here it is. So that's the overall definition that what the state code says, that's what can be considered a nuisance. This is the third major piece that we addressed through the code enforcement activities. In an average year, there's about 850 notices issued for nuisances. We have about a 75% compliance rate, which means about 212 are contracted out. Unlike the weed and snow violations, the state and city code requires that a notice be sent every time there's a violation. There's no way for us to put it on a permanent cleanup list or anything like that. And so going through the process here, it's once again very similar to the other two. The biggest thing I would point out is there is the opportunity for the person getting a notice to appeal the finding that a nuisance exists on the property to city council. You obviously see those from time to time. They're required to be filed within 10 days of receiving the notice, which is something that's stated on the notice itself. And the other thing that I'm going to mention right here is that in addition to abating a nuisance, or a weed or snow violation for that matter, the municipal fraction process by which a citation and fine is issued can be used for all of these. Historically, that's not been something we've done. It's done on an extremely rare basis, but it is a tool we have available. Because the overall definition of nuisance is quite broad, city code gives another 20 enumerated nuisances which are more specifically detailed scenarios that are to be considered a nuisance. Kind of go through them and kind of show you what these actually look like on the ground. First one being is stagnant water complaints, which probably doesn't need a lot of explanation. Unfortunately, growth one is filth. A lot of times, we see excessive amount of animal waste, which just occurs far too often. Brush, kind of like junk there. Junk vehicles, this is one that we've adjusted the code recently, and is one that's covered under the nuisances and is enforced quite frequently. And then finally, we get to the biggest one, which is junk, refuse, and garbage. And so these very three broad definitions for junk, refuge, and garbage, you can read them up there, establish, and then if they're present on a property, that's considered a nuisance. And this is the bulk of what they deal with in terms of nuisances. Pictured here, this is the biggest abatement that we've done, to my knowledge. From this particular property, our contractor hauled off 12 tons of trash, not counting the metal that they didn't weigh out because they took for recycling. Kind of on the other end of the spectrum would be something like this, where obviously that's not 12 tons of trash, but still considered a nuisance. That's a little more frequent. Typically, junk and refuge complaints look a little more like these three. These are, unfortunately, all too common. Kind of getting into some more specific stuff that we do see frequently. One being indoor furniture, furniture that's not designed to be out in the weather, out in the weather and in a deteriorated condition, we consider that to be junk and refuge and require it to be abated. Tires, we do lots of tires being tossed around. This is one where often there's a lot of discussion with the person getting the notice and can generate appeals. There's oftentimes kind of like pictured here, items that are meant to be stored outside, but if they're in a condition where they're not functional and they're unsightly, they're still considered junk. And I think those pictures kind of illustrate that. And then kind of in the similar vein would be building material that's deteriorated to the point of not being usable, is something that really can't be stored outside and is being stored outside. What we wouldn't, is if there's actually an active project where they're being staged. But I mean, I think these pictures kind of illustrate kind of this point where it would cross the line and be considered junk. And surprisingly, we deal with this issue quite a bit, is where there's junk and refuge up on the trailer, and the trailer never moves. We will abate that. Just because it's on the trailer doesn't remove the obligation to not have it on your property. Obviously, if they're actively in the process of getting rid of it, we don't do that. But these are ones, there's at least a 10-day notice where they aren't moving and haven't been moving for a long time. And then kind of in a similar vein, is objects placed in the city right of way. This is another frequent one, big point, two points on this. One being this, stuff like this, we don't give a 10-day notice if it's out in the public right of way. That's a 24-hour thing. You can see in some of those pictures with trash obstructing sidewalks, alleys, on the streets. One of the issues we do have with this is the city has its wonderful bulk collection pickup thing, and when people schedule, the rules are explained to them, the quantity and how and what they'll take, and critically, that you can't put it out 24 hours beforehand. And what we do see a lot of is people putting it out, putting it out then calling and finding out that can't be picked up for three weeks. They'll put out a much larger amount than they will pick up, or items that they won't pick up. For example, mattresses, they'll only pick up if they're wrapped in plastic because of the bed bug issue. So that is another really common way. And so that kind of brings up kind of, because the city does offer resources to promote voluntary compliance. I think one of the things is that our code enforcement and office staff is they really try to work with people to explain what they need to do, kind of, because for a lot of these people, there's a lot of repeat violators, and I'll get to that in a minute, but there is some of these, people didn't understand their obligations, and we want voluntary compliance, so we work to educate them on what's required and kind of what resources are out there to help them with. Kind of want to highlight some of the free city resources that we offer residents that really helps with compliance with this, that people take advantage of. One is the curbside bulk pickup program, which is great. And then the free weeks for the disposal electronics in tires. Saw all the pictures of tires. One thing I didn't put in the presentation is we also find a lot of TVs and old electronics that are tossed in a ditch or in the back, because they're, they cost money typically to dispose. The compost site itself, or you know, taking all your yard waste, there's the Yard Waste Bag Collection Program for those that don't want to go down to the compost site. And then what a lot, one that not a lot of people, not, some people don't realize we have is the brush and limb collection program where, that we will come, if you put it in the proper place and follow the regulations, we'll come pick up brush and limbs. And then finally, kind of took a look at, for all these violations, how many were occurring repeat offenders, both in terms of repeat offenders on the same parcel, or repeat offenders as in, you know, someone that owns multiple properties that has multiple violations. So for the calendar year 2021, which was the year that Krista went through and put together this great information for us, 57.8% of violations occurred on a parcel upon which there was more than one violation that year. The most we saw in a single parcel in 2021 was 12. And then we had the one property owner in town that across all their properties, they had 77 violations, and there were a couple others that were close to that. So that kind of concludes our presentation, but we have our staff here, and if there's any questions or comments or anything you want to do, you know, ask us, this would be a good time.
Oh, yeah.
Any comments?
Well, first of all, thank you, guys, for what you do. I mean, just looking at the numbers for the rental and nuisance, the complaints, you're talking 60 instances a week on average.
They stay really, really busy.
Yeah. And I'm going to guess, for those numbers, like when you said 1,500, was it... And I'm going to guess for those numbers, like when you said fifteen hundred, was it the repeat to go back and check? Or was that, okay, so that was fifteen hundred visits, even if it was a return to, okay. That's still a lot for two people, because you still have probably documentation and paperwork and all that stuff.
Yep. The whole, the, the rental inspection process, it's quite lengthy that, you know, if you're interested, we can do a presentation on that. There, there is a, a lot that goes into that.
And so it sounds like our fee is like twenty-five dollars in some cases and then fifty dollars.
So what, what that is, is i- if, if we have to abate it, first we send you an, we get an invoice from our contractor, Keller and Keller. We take that, turn it into our own invoice, which is the cost that we paid plus twenty-five dollars. Then if you don't pay that, and it has to come for special assessment, which you guys see on a regular basis, another fifty dollars is added on top of that. Then the county adds their own fee on top of that, and that's what gets assessed to the property.
I'm just wondering if that twenty-five is really low, if it's.
I know in my twelve years here, it has not changed.
If that's what?
Low.
I think it's low.
I mean, anymore, um, you know. So, and why don't we use the citations? I mean, I can't, on the first time, definitely not. But on repeat offenders, or if you had one owner with seventy-seven properties, why isn't that cited?
I would agree with that. I mean, I don't know, just historically, how things would be done. I, I would think that a lot of it goes as the site, the abatement process, it's very quick. It's, you can get through a lot. If, to do a citation, because it becomes more of a legal process, there's a lot of paperwork steps that need to be done. And so kind of balancing that with, you, you see the very large workload that they have. But I would agree that I think, and we're, we want to use that tool more on, on the particularly egregious cases.
Repeat offenders, excessive, because there, it doesn't matter, twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars you throw at them means nothing. But if they get a citation, it might be impactful.
The citation, you can get a, a judge's order to not do it again. Then if they continue to violate, penalties for, you know, violating a judge's order are far more severe than anything we can do through our processes.
One other question that'll go before, the twelve tons of trash, did we bill them the actual cost?
Yeah.
Or did we bill them the actual cost plus enough charge for administrative fees or our time?
So in that case, no, we, we, we have sensed that one occurred. We've added that, that on those particular, we can then charge for actual costs. Um, I believe that one was over, the bill, it was over three thousand dollars.
And I don't mind a, you know, a pass through is nice when you want to be nice, but if it's twelve tons of trash, I think an administrative upcharge might be something we want to look at. Ten percent? Fifteen, twenty?
For the administrative fee?
Yeah.
I think we could just do a little re, like what, what are other cities doing? What's appropriate? But if you're interested in increasing the charge, we'll, we'll check into that, yeah.
I think it's worth looking at, especially again on those excessive. So, all right, sorry, that's a few things I wrote down.
Councilmember Brockert?
Andrew, I was wondering if we have, um, resources to help folks who can't necessarily bundle up a mattress all by themselves and, you know, show, tell them where they can get the bags and maybe get them a little help as well?
Well, we, is, you can get the bags for free down at, at the transfer station.
Okay, okay.
We don't have direct resources to help you. They carry them, but for, and that, you guys hand them out on a quite a frequent basis.
They also, and Jody might want to speak to this, but, but do refer, like basically assist people who are, who have accumulated this kind of thing with other kinds of services, you know, to assist them with these kinds of issues. So Jody can talk a little bit about what that entails, but.
We do, if there's contact or, or some indication that there are people who are having a problem or they ask, they say they need time, we make referrals. So it might be to senior resources or some other nonprofit. A lot of times if they're having housekeeping types of issues, if it's that kind of thing, we'll make a referral to MCSA for the housing navigator and that kind of thing. Housekeeping is kind of beyond anybody's scope at this point, but yes, we do try to make sure.
Do we provide protective clothing in case you actually have to come in contact with something that might have bugs in it?
We do not. We try to take some precautions, but, um, and if they're uncomfortable, like if it's so bad and they ask, we, there are certain substances that we do take those kinds of precautions for, have in the past.
Okay. The other thing I'd mention too is that occasionally they take a law enforcement officer with them too, because there, there are, you know, it's can be contentious.
So, so sometimes on repeat offenders, you, you know how the conversation goes and people get combative. And there are times, it does take, some cleanups do take a significant amount of not just our time, but police time as well. She had a cleanup the other day and there were police there all day long.
Councilmember Freilich?
I just wanted to ask more about habitual offenders. I, I know that we set up for habitual offenders. Are we enforcing that by increasing their cost of burden for having this garbage?
We have started watching it. It had, it isn't old enough to actually, for anybody to meet the definition of a habitual offender yet. So you have to have three or four violations within twelve months.
Yeah. I was just looking at what you said up there. You had a couple of them there.
Yeah.
I know they're still ongoing, so are we grandfathering those people in there?
We started on the date that, that the code was adopted and, um, but it's by property, not by owner.
Okay.
So that's a different thing. And it, and some of that gets a little more complicated because if they, if they own that many properties, they're likely a lot of rental properties as well. So that gets a little more complicated.
So you have started your list of, okay.
And we don't actually know who's renting. So we do, though we do send letters or have been sending letters to like tenant. It's all like you get junk mail and it says, or it says City of Muscatine on the top, so I hope they open it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Genrich?
Let me try to get all my thoughts. And, you know, first of all, I, uh, I, I think that cleaning up nuisance violations and so forth is imperative for our council to be, you know, united on and strive toward that philosophy of a vibrant community where people are taking care of their properties. It doesn't, uh, it seems to me like there are way too many situations where, uh, you know, people just don't care about their junk. So, but I, I have a question here first, like the, how, that snow and ice notice, how is that issued? Sticker on the door, pardon me?
Captain, in the microphone.
So Tammy's one of our nuisance inspectors.
For snow and ice, it's posted on the door, physically get it, get out of the vehicle, tape it to the door and then go back the next day.
Okay, I, I just, I wanted to make, because, uh, a situation that I run into with some of the folks in the fifth ward are the trash cans and the recycling containers that don't get pulled back to their house. Okay, so, and, and I'm in agreement with Peggy, I think, I don't know other council members, but I think our fees should be increased, you know, for these violations. And I, I don't want to make suggestions that make more work for you guys. I'd like to make suggestions or support policies that in the end reduce the amount of work that you have to do because you've told me that you take trash cans back up to people's houses. When someone, uh, you know, in a couple situations that I've, uh, you know, contacted you about, and that's wrong. I commend you for that, you know. You're an outstanding humanitarian, you know. But I think we should find a way that, you know, you got that garbage can out on the curb and it's not been picked up and it happens all the time with, it's, I know I'm overstating it, but it happens way too often with, uh, certain residents here in town. And if they had a sticker on their door one time, a sticker on their door two times, and the third time you got called up there or something like that, you just send an automatic thirty-five dollar bill to the people that own that house, some deal like that, you know. Because I don't think our community development people should have to be continually making a trip back up there and bird dogging people to take their trash cans back up to their house or behind their building. So my question about the snow and ice thing, uh, you know, I think we should change some kind of a clause in our code about, you know, put that sticker on the door, get your trash can picked up. I think we should increase fees. And, uh, you know, I've been involved in, uh, some of these nuisance cleanup places where people were actually passed out on a homeless person on the pile of trash laying there. And, uh, and other situations, you know, that I've visited a couple of times, which we've all been involved in those things. And, uh, you know, I'm supportive of in, uh, in my, uh, statement of making progress with this issue and not creating more work for you, but trying to find some way to, uh, get some of these continual habitual situations taken care of, you know. Put the sticker on the door three time, you know. Okay, anyway.
Councilmember Osborne?
I'd just like to say that you probably don't hear it enough, how much I appreciate this part of the work that we do as a city. Yesterday in our goal-setting session, there was a really troubling bit and, bit of information and data that we looked at, you know, we're adding more houses to the list than we are tearing down at this point in time. And that's kind of sad. It's too late to do anything about that at that point in time. But I, I think you guys are at the forefront of, of helping that not happen. And, uh, and I just want to, you know, I appreciate all of our departments and everything, but I'm, I'm sure you guys don't hear it enough that how much we appreciate and support what you're doing. And, and I'd really like to hear from you guys to echo a little bit of what John was saying, what, what we can do to help make your jobs better, cheaper, faster, whatever that looks like. And, uh, I'm sure we'll get all kinds of support from council, like you're hearing all that, so.
You're, go ahead and free, you're free to answer that question if there's something that you think would help make the, make the work a little easier.
Well, maybe issuing the citation and incorporating that into our process might be the way to go. I know that we are definitely issuing more right of way violations posted on the door. And so within a twenty-four hour period, we are actually seeing, uh, things either getting picked up or they're calling in saying, what do I need to do? So a lot of people don't know what they need to do. They, they, you know, put the cart before the horse and they put things out first without having a plan. And that notice on the door makes them have a plan. What do I need to do? So, uh, we try to educate them as, as best we can and, uh, and if they don't comply, then we will contract it out. It's, it's as simple as that. So, um, I try to educate people as, as much as I possibly can, um, through conversation and phone calls. So I think I'm doing what I need to be doing. But like I said, I think the citation might be something we want to at least look at, look at a little further. I know that if we're trying to get somebody to comply, let's say it's for grass, and that grass is growing and growing and growing, goes past that five day notice and with the citation, it's going to take longer to get that grass to where it needs to be. So if we do that, that's kind of why we're probably not doing it is because we're not getting that gratification, that ten day notice or that six day notice we have for grass completed in the timeframe that code says it needs to be done. So I think we should probably look more into the citation process. I will say this though, uh, when we do put a notice on the door and it's a rental property, the landlord does not know that we're putting it on the door unless I call them directly, which I do all the time. Hey, there's junk on the right of way, uh, you need to get it off or we're going to contract it out. They don't know because they don't drive past that house. So, you know.
Yeah, I think that's got to be addressed too, because, uh, you know, if you get called to a place where the trash cans are on the terr, on that curb all the time and you put a sticker on that door, that, uh, you know, you got twenty-four hours and like I say, the third time you have to do that, it's an automatic fifty bucks. I think that fifty bucks should be sent to the person that owns that property. Yeah, you know, something like that. And because you shouldn't have to be making special phone calls to property owners, try to get that, you know, covered in some way. You know, I don't have all the answers, but I think landlords need to take responsibility for managing their tenants. And if their tenants can take the trash can out to the curb, they can take it back. And if there's instruction that the, uh, that that's their responsibility, but the landlord's not communicating that, then the landlord should be responsible too, anyway.
I would add that when it comes specifically to garbage cans not being out on the curb is, unlike a lot of stuff, the city code makes it so the landlord and tenant can be held responsible separately or jointly. So depending on the situation, we do have that flexibility to, you know, sign a blame work really lies.
I do hear from some landlords that work, work, are proactively working with you, right? They'll contact you and say, hey, I've got a tenant, I've been talking to him. We need to probably get some, some more hammer involved or whatever you want to call. But I appreciate you guys' judgment. I think every council member here would, would echo that this is one of the number one things that folks like to talk about. That means it's important work. And again, I just appreciate what you do and I, and your judgment on whether you carry a garbage can back or issue a citation or whatever that all looks like, I, I will support you all the way.
Councilmember Brockert?
Um, there was a situation in my ward probably two or three years ago where a church that sits on a corner lot had some difficulties with snow removal because not everyone, there isn't someone there every day of the week and their population is aging. So would it be prudent maybe to give the pastor a call at those, um, situations where the snow or ice has not been removed, like within, oh, twenty-four to thirty-six hours?
I personally have not posted anything on it.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Might have been personal residence. So typically what we do is we look in Beacon and see who owns the property, see if there's any way, if it's a rental, if it's a landlord and we have a contact number, I will make that phone call.
Okay. I would say though, in general, it's really difficult for them to provide a unique response to every issue, situation. They don't have the band, the bandwidth capacity to do, they have to follow a process. Otherwise, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible, yeah.
The other thing point out on that is that kind of rental properties are a little unique and because of the, the rental registration program, we have actual contact information for the responsible party for all of the properties in town. We don't have that unless we just happen to know it for some other reason.
Okay.
And speaking of the church, and I, in my twelve years, I could think of maybe one other time that's come up. So it, it is important, but it, thankfully, it's not a very common situation. Most churches are very, very good about it.
Yeah, they, they did get the notice for abatement and they were quite concerned because, you know, obviously with a small congregation, they didn't have all the money at once. So they did pay their fees, but it had to be paid in increments. And, you know, they are, we're, you know, we hate to sock them with something they really can't afford when you've got all these other expenses too.
Councilmember Freilich?
I just have one quick little comment. Going back to the habitual ones, at, once we've established habitual, I think we should increase that to the minimum of a hundred and five dollars, isn't that our minimum fine for?
Citation?
Start there.
Uh, the habitual offender, it, that's not how the code reads.
So on, on municipal violation, the first violation, it's up to five hundred. There, there is no minimum. And then on second, second violations, up to seven fifty?
Okay. I think we need to jack that up, period. Get these people, start doing their job.
And get their attention.
Get their attention anyway.
Councilmember Gordon?
Sorry, I've got one more question here. Do you guys have what you need? I mean, the thought of, do you have like painter white suits if you're cleaning up something? And do you have what you need to do your job to keep yourself safe? You have heavy duty gloves? Do you have a first aid kit in your truck, your vehicle?
I do have a first aid kit in my vehicle. I have latex gloves. I have booties that I put on my shoes. I do wear boots if I know I'm going into a rental property, especially that might have an infestation of cockroaches or things like that. So, um.
But they're provided?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure that.
Yes.
So just to make sure everyone, they, uh, they don't actually clean up the, abate the properties. They're, but they're in, they're in it, in the property though, so there are hazards there.
Yeah.
So the hazards are, hazard, that's more, typically more in the, these, these are all done outside. It's rental housing program where they are inside. And I would say it's the point where if they don't feel safe being in there, then, then that's the point where we do step in and post them for no occupancy, which it's another function that they do, which was a long presentation anyway, that'd be a whole other set of things that they're.
You know, if you're walking around the property and you don't have heavy duty boots and stuff, you could, you know, take a nail. Just want to make sure that. Just want to make sure that, you know, you've got safety in mind and that we're supplying what you need.
I do. It's included in our, in our clothing allowance to what we can spend money on for that. And I do, yes, I do have.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would just say these folks have, I think, one of the toughest jobs in the city. So, you know, any support you can lend when we ask for resources, when we need help with code or requirements, just, you know, a little grace, too, is appreciated because they do, if you haven't went out on an inspection, you can do that if you'd like and shadow an inspector to get a little feeling for what they experienced. I think the pictures do that to some degree, but, but hug a nuisance inspector when you see one because they need it.
Any other comments? Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have a budget basis financial statement overview for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. Good evening, Nancy.
Tonight, we're going to review the budget basis financial statements. And this is first of three different things that you'll see for fiscal year end. We've got a state financial report that has to be approved by city council, and then the audit report will be done early, early December. But budget basis, we spend a lot of time in the winter on budget, and this is kind of a wrap-up and summary of the results of last year. This presentation is informational. There's no action needed after the presentation. First section will be overview of the general fund, the actual revenues, expenditures, and ending fund balances. Then we'll look at the general fund balance history. Actually, it's a 12-year history. I've got another report for the ending fund balances of the rest of the city's funds. And then just some summary comments and then council discussion and feedback. But if you have any questions as I go, feel free to ask them as, as well. The general fund is where we spend a lot of our time during the budget process. This first slide shows our major revenue sources, and the, the largest source of funding for the general fund is property taxes. 7.96 million. Hotel motel taxes, 593,000. Kind of skipping over some of the smaller ones. Utility franchise fee came in at 518,000. Licenses and permits, 429,000. Fines and forfeiture, 664,000. Intergovernmental revenue, that's revenue from federal, state, and other local grants, that's over a million dollars. Charges for services, 585,000. Use of money in property is interest and rents, 91,000. Then there's a host of other revenues that are in that other revenue category of over a million. So the revenues in the general fund are just over 13 million. This next slide shows expenditures in the general fund by function. And these aren't by individual departments, but just kind of a summary of, and those functions are set by the state, state code. Largest is public safety. There's 10.68 million of operating expenditures, and then down below for public safety, another 154,000 of capital outlay. Public works, 2.7 million operating and 306 capital. A smaller amount for health and social services, that's our subsidies. Culture and recreation includes police, library, art center, and all the park activities. About 3.6 million operating expenditures and an additional 148,000 in capital. Community and economic development, that's 993,000 operating and additional 24,000 capital. And general government, 2.96 million operating and 195 capital. And those are on our actual operating budget expenditure reports. It does show which, which departments are in which function. So the general, general government section includes mayor and council, city administrator, HR, finance, insurance, the city's insurance and building and grounds. So that's, adds up when you add all those together. So the total revenues are under expenditures before transfers by 8.76 million. The next slide, the transfers in, and that's a significant part. We have the employee benefits tax levy that funds all the pension and insurance costs for general fund employees. Road use tax funds most of the public works activities. Ambulance fund transfers funds for a prorated cost of staffing of the fire department. There's some perpetual care interest that's transferred in, and then some TIF funds for admin costs in the general fund. So the transfers in, total 9.5 million. A few transfers out to the equipment replacement reserve and computer replacement funds. And we didn't have any this year, but there's also some subsidy transfers to the, some years to the airport fund and the transit fund. So the total other financing source, 9.1 million. And the revenues and other sources are, is actually over expenditures and other uses by that 372,000. And that's before we take into consideration encumbrances, which are outstanding purchase orders at the end of the year. Beginning fund balance, 5.3 million. Ending before encumbrances, 5.67 million. We did have quite a bit, 329,000 in encumbrances. Some of that is vehicles on order due to the delay in delivery for those. So the unreserved ending balance, 5.34 million. Next several slides are just kind of an analysis of where the general fund is and then some impact or some key points of why, and it's actually a very good position at the end of the year. The original budget, we thought it would be 4.75 million ending fund balance. When you did the revised estimate last year, we increased that to 5.18 million, and the actual ended up with that 5.344 million. So it's actually over our revised estimate by 161,000. And then that general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is 23.83%. So that's very good as well. The boxed area, some of the encumbrances will actually be paid by road use tax. So when that's taken into account, it's actually 365,000 higher and 24.76% of general fund expenditures. So it is a very good result at the end of the year. There were a few items requested to be carried forward. Departments weren't ready to issue POs by the end of the year. Those are 8,900, relatively small amount, but they'll be able to purchase those in this current fiscal year. And then we'll go through the major revenue sources and see how those came compared to budget. In total, revenues and transfers in are under the revised estimate by 408,000. But a lot of that reason it's under is because of the transfers in being under because the corresponding expenditures were also under. And I'll just pick and choose which ones to point out here. Actually, property taxes were a little higher than, than the levy amount, and that's usually the case, except in years, the COVID years, when people weren't, or were given a grace period to pay their taxes. Utility franchise fees, that came out over by 168,000. If you recall, the franchise fee rate was reduced from 5% to 3% midway through the winter. So it was effective February 1. But that, with the 3%, we will get less money next year. And then if gas prices start to moderate, that would also reduce, reduce the revenue from the franchise fees. Road use tax transfer in is under by 337,000 because the expenditures were under by that same amount. The same with employee benefits transfer in, under by 65,000, again, because I think changes in cover, in insurance coverage for employees and some vacancy time when we didn't have positions filled. Hotel motel tax, this was the, probably the surprise of the fiscal year. It's over our rec, our revised estimate by 228,000. The original budget, and this was based on what happened during COVID, we had budgeted at 300,000 revised estimate, things were looking up, went to 365,000. And then the actual was 593,000, which is our record-high hotel motel tax ever, which is surprising. But that is, and we can't get individual hotel information, but the economy is definitely recovering. We think that the room rates are probably higher than they were before. So since it's a percentage, the hotel motel tax would go up because it's a percentage of actual. And we understand that was a lot of construction work and workers staying here this year. And I know the men's bowling tournament was here. So I think it was a combination of various factors that led to that high amount. I would, we probably will think before we budget for that high of an amount going forward, but it'll definitely be much higher than our original budget. So that's one of the surprisingly increased revenue amounts. The one under that community development revenues, and it came in over 91,000. We also budgeted conservatively for building permit fees because it was, things were slow during, during the pandemic. And I just looked this up during Andrew's presentation. Nuisance reimbursements, the costs that city council assesses monthly to properties when they, people don't pay their, their assessment fees, that was over by 24,000, and the actual amount collected was 134,000. So there is a lot of results from putting those as liens on, on people's property, and we do collect a lot of that. Construction permits were over by about 60,000, and they were just shade under 300,000. So we had a good year for construction permits as well. Library, slightly higher. Art center, slightly lower. Parks and Rec, there's various divisions there, but overall, it was over by 15,000. Cemetery was over our estimate by 12,000. Public works was under by 28,000. Police grants, under by 16,000. Court fines, over 9,800. The ATE fines were under, and that was really close to our estimate, but it was still under by 5,300. Other police revenues, over by 14.6. Licenses and permits, over by 28,000. And some of that is due to the state had deferred fees for some of the beer and liquor licenses during the pandemic, but then they did catch up with them. So we had some double counting of revenues last fiscal year. And interest, towards the end of the year, the interest rates did start to go up, so we're going to see some more interest revenue as well. These next two items are significant. We had budgeted to balance the general fund budget by using 300,000 of the state COVID relief funds. And we didn't need to use those because the other revenues came in that well. So those funds will remain and can be used in future budgets. And the same with the ARPA funds. We had budgeted to use 222,000 of those, but yet we were able to maintain and actually increase our fund balance without using those. So then that stays in that fund to be used for other projects that we will discuss in the next agenda item. So the revenues show that they're under, but that's because the transfers in were under. And having the transfers in, especially the ARPA and the state COVID relief fund, is, is good as far as positioning us, us going forward and in the next budget. The next page is expenditures compared to the original revised estimate. And they came in under by 568,000. Of that, 8,900 was the carry for, carry-forward items, but then every function area did come out under, under budget. So general government was under by 109,000. Public safety, under by 59,000. Library, art center, and parks, under by 158,000. Community and economic development, under by 48,000. Economic well-being, under by 12,500, and that's, usually that's right on budget. But we were able to use housing cares money to fund part of the homeless, the MCSA homeless prevention counselor position.
Nancy, this is Peg. Just a quick question on this slide, because we came in a half a million under expenditures. Do you believe it's because they held back and didn't purchase things, long lead time supply chain, or our estimates were off? Because this impacts how we're going to make decisions. So.
Yes, it's, it may be a combination. It's hard for departments to budget maintenance. You know, you don't know what's going to go wrong and what needs to be fixed. That's part of it. In the culture and recreation area, the parks, the seasonal pay plan was increased to attract more workers. They still struggled, and I think most of the seasonal wages came in way under budget because they still couldn't, couldn't fill those positions.
All right, thank you. It's not only purchases, but it's, like I said, it's wages and everything, too. So, okay.
But anybody that, you know, if, if there was outstanding purchase orders and we were waiting for that, for delivery, those are in the encumbrances.
Yeah.
So I think departments were able to provide a good level of service while staying under their budgeted amount.
Thank you.
Sure. Public works, under by 155,000. And then we didn't need to do the airport subsidies, so that was 17,000 under. So it's a combination of very strong revenues this year and departments operating with, well within their budgets that resulted in the increase in fund balance as well as not having to use the ARPA funds and the state COVID relief funds to balance the budget. And then we do have a history of the general fund balance, and I left this at 12 years just to show the drastic. just to show the drastic increase from before when the minimum fund balance was ten percent of expenditures. So I, usually we cut off at ten years, but we have gradually increased that and been able to maintain and actually increase it over the last five, six years. The next slide is the same information, but this is the general fund balance as a percent of expenditures. And even though it shows that we decreased the percentage, you know, to twenty three point eight, that's still a very good percentage, even though our fund balance did go up for the year. But it does show that we've been able to maintain the twenty two, twenty three percent range, probably for at least eight years now. So that's very good. And that did, having that in place, did help the city get through the pandemic. The state and the federal money also assisted, but having a good fund balance does help you address long-term needs that you might have. The next, I think, four or five slides, I'm not going to really go through too much on them. But if you have any questions on it, this lists all the city's operating funds, ending fund balance when we did the original budget, revised estimate fund balance, the actual ending balance, and whether the actual is favorable or unfavorable. And then those are referenced to the footnotes on on later slides in, without going through thirty footnotes, which I could easily do, you know, but I won't do that.
We appreciate it.
In, in general, the the footnotes say whether revenues were over or under estimates and how much expenditures were were under or over estimates. There's also some of the things, like in transit, it's the timing of the expenditure. So they have, I think, a couple buses on order, so we have those as encumbrances, but we don't have the grants reflected yet. So even though it shows it's under, it's not, it's not really in a poor position. The other one is, oh, I think on the next page. It showed where we didn't use the state COVID money or the ARPA. So the emergency fund, which has the state money in it, is over by three hundred thousand, and that does have six hundred and forty eight thousand in that, in that fund. The ARPA funds, and this was just the first half of it, was what was budgeted, but not having to do that transfer is also, makes that over our estimate by two hundred and sixty three thousand. If you want to look at any of those individually, we we can, but but the footnotes, I think, are, try to explain just where where things are, you know. But in general, most of them are are higher than what, where we thought we'd be. Let's get through all the footnotes. And then this slide, and I always look, you know, you look back and you see what was, were the challenges, challenges when we did the budget. And so the original budget was done in January and February of 2021. And at that time, we were taking conservative, cautious approach for estimating revenues. Vaccinations for COVID were not readily available for most age groups. Numerous people were still working from home, and businesses had not returned to their normal operations. So that was a challenging time when we did the original FY22 budget. We did, however, in that budget, add back one of the three firefighter positions that were deferred for hiring because of the pandemic, and that was effective April one. Hotel motel taxes were estimated down to three hundred thousand, based on the recent quarters at that time. Before that, we were in the five hundred thousand dollar range. Construction permits were estimated at one hundred and fifty thousand, and that's down from the three hundred and ten that we had had in the past. But we did still have a balanced original budget, but it was balanced by using three hundred thousand of the state COVID relief funds. Same type of things, just kind of key things for when we did the revised estimate for FY22, and that was just the spring of 2022. And it appeared the the economy was recovering, but we still were cautious as far as how fast that recovery would happen. But in the revised estimate, we did fill the last two firefighter positions that were deferred for hiring. Halftime community development inspector position was increased to full time. The seasonal pay plan, hourly rates were increased. And then select capital outlay items that weren't included in the original budget were added back, and that did total three hundred and forty eight thousand. As part of that revised estimate, the utility franchise fee was, rate was decreased from five percent to three percent. And then the, with adding back those things, the revised estimate was balanced by using three hundred thousand that we had in the original budget of the state COVID relief funds and additional two hundred and twenty two thousand from the ARPA funds. But both the original budget and the revised estimate were balanced budget in that our revenues funded our expenditures, even though they were, there was some use of one-time funds with the COVID and ARPA funds. And that, just a few summary thoughts. Ending balance, as I said before, was twenty three point eight percent of general fund expenditures, but that was higher than the twenty one point two percent in the original budget and the twenty two point six percent in the revised estimate. That balance more than meets the minimum fund balance policy, but that policy provides that higher balances of twenty five percent or more would further add to the financial stability of the city and allow more latitude in addressing revenue or expenditure fluctuations, disaster situations, and also demonstrate credit worthiness to the bond rating agencies. And while we're, we ended last year in a good position, there's still some concerns going forward. The inflationary cost of goods and services, continuing and supply chain issues, uncertainty in future taxable valuations due to the state rollback factors on residential and other property classifications. Until we get those, we, that really sets the tone for for the budget. Last year, you know, we had that flat valuation, which was challenging to work with. And then there's talk on the news about a possible recession, and that can also impact the revenues of the city. And it's just talk at this point, but if you listen a lot there, they say the recession word frequently. But having that strong ending balance, that does position the city to try to get through those challenges again. And then this first bullet point, we need to keep in mind that we are balancing our budgets, recent budgets, with the state COVID relief and the federal ARPA funds. That's what those funds are used for, or that's why they were allocated. But we have to keep in mind that they're one-time funds, and they must be fully expended or obligated by the end of December of 2024. Positive balances in all the city's operating funds, we did have to do a transfer from the general fund to eliminate a deficit in the boat harbor fund, but every other enterprise and other fund has a pos, positive balance, balances. And again, this is informational, but it's very good results for the end of the year. And in the book that I handed out last, last week, I wanted to point out that there is a grant summary in the back of it, and the city had nine point seven six million in grants and donations last fiscal year, which is very good. Any questions?
I'm a little disappointed you didn't read all those footnotes, Nancy.
I knew somebody would want them.
Any other comments?
How do you feel about potentially lowering the franchise fee this year back to around the sort of two percent range?
I would be more comfortable if we didn't do that till after we had the taxable valuations. And that utility franchise fee, I don't think I've heard if those higher gas prices are supposed to continue through this winter, you know, and so it's, there's a lot of moving parts to the budget.
You think that last year was high, this year will be higher.
Okay. But again, that taxable, that flat taxable valuation last year was a surprise to me and challenging.
Nancy, with the franchise fee, if we go to change it again, you know, either up or down, don't we have to jump through a few more hoops than we did the last time we went through the process?
There's, there's hoops to lower it, but there's more hoops to increase it.
Okay.
And we've done both, and a lot of steps.
Yeah. They just don't want to see us in the same situation where we're going to have it budget time, be sitting here having a conversation about raising the taxes of the community again. I won't support that, especially since you're telling us that we didn't use our ARPA funds or those other funding to balance the budget, that that money's still there.
It is definitely still there. And it was a good year, but it may be kind of an anomaly year with revenues coming in that much higher than what we, where we thought they'd be and expenditures coming in that much lower. But every year is different as far as balancing the budget.
I kind of echo the same thing. I I see some encouragement here for not, not having that discussion this year, whereas last year, I thought we might be here again, but I'm happy to, I see some encouragement anyways, all I'll say at this point, and that's why I'm asking about the franchise fee already.
But it is, there's, I can go on and on, but it was, we had already decided to reduce that franchise fee rate before we had taxable valuations, and we hadn't had flat taxable valuations at the same time. Costs are going up, you know, so, I mean, there's build-in union pay scale increases and health insurance goes up every year. So it was challenging.
And I do agree with one of the challenges you highlighted around the hotel motel tax, taxes. I know just our company alone, we occupied the equivalent of about two of the hotels in town with our outage for, from March to June, and that won't happen again this year.
Yeah.
Finding a hotel March to June was was tough for a lot of our contractors and.
Yeah. And and there's those, there's always those kind of fluctuations, and we like to budget conservatively on 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 revenues, something realistic. If I would have said, let's raise the budget for hotel motel tax to six hundred thousand, you guys would have thought I was crazy, and I would have been, but.
I would guess we're going to see it go back closer to around the four hundred thousand dollar unless our, unless our, our chamber cloak might be.
We need more events.
I think there, I, I, I feel very positive about what I'm seeing in the city as far as more opportunities coming. You know, we've got the boat coming, we've got more people coming into the area. I'm hopeful that it will continue on this path.
I think this is a good transition year, I hope, too.
City administrator, what?
Yeah, Nancy, can you tell us when we get valuations?
It's either the last week of December or the first week in January.
Yeah, so the way we budget, we identify all of our expenses first, and then we find out how much money we have. So I think council will have time, once you, once we get valuations, to think about how you want to balance the revenue, you know, if it's property tax, if it's franchise fee, if it, you know, whatever it is. So you will get to that point, but I do think from a, you know, from, from this year, it's a, you know, it looks positive, so.
All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Sure.
Next, we'll do an ARPA update and propose budgets to funded the second tranche of this funding.
Do you want me to start, Carol, or you want to start?
Oh, you.
You go ahead.
Oh.
You're doing great.
Wow.
Is that too small a print? I think we'll pull it up.
We didn't do a PowerPoint either. And the first two pages are kind of what we had included in last year's revised estimate or this, or FY23's budget. I just had eye surgery, so I'm seeing very well now, so I can read this.
So before, before Nancy starts talking, I'll be asking a couple things. So does city council have any questions or comments on expenditure of the first tranche of ARPA funds allocated to the city? And the second question would be, does city council have feedback on identified projects to be funded with the second tranche of ARPA funds allocated to the city? So keep that in mind. Begin, please.
Thank you. You're welcome. Yeah, the, we had to do a, all this, all the NEU's non-entitlement entities had to do their first ARPA report as of end of March this year, and then the following one is due next March. So that's how I broke out these categories, because you had to set up projects for them. But, so the left-hand side is the original budget for revised estimate for FY22 and budget for FY23. And that first line is where, then the right-hand side is actual or reestimated amounts. So that actual for that first line is where we took out that two hundred and twenty two thousand of the ARPA funds to the general fund. So far, we've left in the three hundred and twenty four thousand used to balance the FY23 budget. But again, those, you can see right in the budget narrative that if those funds are not needed, they'll stay in the ARPA funds. So there was a number of software things, our Springbrook conversion to cloud, HR online applications, a few things in city administrator, the agenda and meeting software in the project two. Project three was art center, technology and security improvements. Project four was community development, city plan updates for the housing study and the comprehensive plan. Project five was the community development, new programs or program expansions. And there was a couple equipment items, but there was funding for a grant writer, heart and soul coordinator, neighborhood housing initiatives, and cleanup on property on Grandview. And generally, I've carried those forward, that we'll still expend those, but if we wouldn't, then those funds could be used, the balance could be used for other things. wouldn't, then those funds could be used, the balance could be used for other things.
Just real quick, I'll mention that several, the, the, the status of the items that you funded, we have implemented the agenda management software, which you, you all know. Nancy's in the process of, of implementing Springbrook. I think you're actually, it's almost go live on that, right?
It's go live, I think. Halloween. That's...
Uh-oh. We've implemented the HR online tracking software. I think our, we'll go live with the citizen request management software probably in, within the month. Several of these items for art center have been bid already or, or have been awarded, I think. I can't, I don't remember if anything's been awarded, but has at least been bid. We, the housing study and the comp plan haven't been done yet, where I think Jody's working on an RFP for the housing study and then the, once that's complete, the comprehensive plan will follow that. And then I know the heart and soul coordinator was hired and, you know, we put together the, the program for neighborhood initiatives and then we're working with the chamber on programs for small businesses. And we've bid, and I don't think it's done yet, but I think we did issue the PO to the cleanup of the Grandview.
I think for part of it.
For part of it, okay. So, but that's impressive. So I just want council to know that we've ticked off a lot of these things and I think pretty much everything is in, in progress, so.
Has the online application been pretty smooth so far?
Yeah, it's great.
Okay.
Nancy doesn't like it that much. She got a hundred and seventy applicants for a parking attendant.
And I, I had the HR manager screen them for me. But we did get a lot more applications, but we did find, though, that some of them, if it's easier to apply, they might not really be interested. So we invited twelve to, to come for an interview and I think three declined the interview.
So how is that compared to years before, like before going for a, a parking attendant? How many applicants would we get?
We would have fifteen or twenty applications.
Wow, okay.
So it's doing what it was intended to do.
Yeah, no, that's great.
There are a few that we, that are, we have to weed out, but for the most part, we've had more applicants for jobs than we, than we did before, yeah.
Great.
Can I make a comment? I don't know if this is...
Of course you can.
Okay, awesome. I want to tell you that the civic clerk thing is wonderful.
What on earth?
What was that?
We're going to find out soon.
Okay. Okay. I want to tell you, the civic clerk is wonderful. For my councilman member that's over there talking about how small the print is, if you had your computer with you, you could open it up and actually expand the vision, so you can actually read it. I love the new system. It's making it easier for me as I'm reading through documents to actually be able to document what I'm thinking at the time and not have to write another separate piece of paper. So for that, I think this has been a wonderful investment going forward, so.
And I would mention it's saved a lot of staff time. We don't, I don't spend near the time on the agenda than I did, as I did before, and neither does Sinda, so it saves quite a bit of staff time.
I like the snippets.
You could probably quit killing trees by writing paper.
The other thing I mentioned, too, is right now, we're installing the city hall key card system. So they were actually in here today drilling for that, so that's in, on the...
Awesome.
Great.
Yeah, that's on the next page.
Oh, you jumped the, jumped the gun.
The deal in Nancy's thunder.
Yeah, that was project six, and that did come in a little higher than what we had allowed for in the budget. But then the total that we've obligated so far on projects you've already approved is one million four hundred and eighty-nine thousand compared to the one million seven fifteen that was in the original budget. So our total for the two tranches is three million five hundred and thirty-three thousand. We've obligated what, about one point four nine, and so there's like two th- two million and forty-three thousand yet to be allocated, and that's what the next list has some proposed uses of, of that remaining amount. And it's calculated again in the box in the top, but some of the considerations that Carol and I used to go through our list of numerous things requested by departments was that if there were things addressing the city's overall strategic goals, we wanted those to be included. More technology improvements, facility upgrades, including security-related projects. And then number four are items unlikely to be funded through the regular budget process. And there's some that have been requested in the past and always get moved down the But we also, at this time, including funds to balance the FY twenty-four budget if that's needed, and another three hundred thousand has been tentatively allocated for that. But as we go through the budget process, we'll see if that's actually needed. And then number six is infrastructure improvements. And I've got a note under there that some of these items actually fall in more than one of those categories, so I've just put them in one category, but some do fall in, in more than one. What you've already allocated, the contribution of two hundred and fifty thousand to the Mulberry Health Clinic building, and that is to address, that's one of the things in the city's overall strategic goals, was to improve access to healthcare. A few more technology improvements. We've looked at an electronic bidding system. First-year cost, about fourteen thousand. And this is something that departments can do online. Any, any vendor contractors can sign up on, for what they want to be interested in. There's no cost for them to sign up, and then they're, all the specifications can be put on each of the bid notices. And some of the things will be, have less specifications, like vehicles and equipment, and it can go through construction contracts. But there's places where they can't submit them unless they do all the things that are required. We had a demo that I invited departments that do a lot of purchasing to, to see that, and I think some of the comments, it might have been Brian, said, well, when are we going to get this? I, I think it's a, a good system. They say that it's, a lot of cities in Iowa have it in place. The three state universities use it. I think the DOT uses it, Davenport uses it. And actually, our rep that did the demos used to be in purchasing at the city of Davenport, you know, so she's well-versed, and I think it was a good demo. Carol was there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit like the HR software where we, we save us time handling paper. It keeps contractors, it, it reduces the opportunity to miss a bid deadline because, you know, oh, I got stuck in an elevator, I didn't make the time, and, you know, we, we basically couldn't accept the bid. So they, they can do this electronically now, and it, you know, I think it'll be a real improvement.
What's the, what's the, I mean, it's fourteen dollars, or fourteen dollars, that'd be nice, huh? Fourteen thousand for first-year setup. What is it to maintain it then, after that?
It's about thirteen annually.
Annually.
What we're proposing, though, is that the departments that use it the most, that we allocate that cost annually.
And has anybody actually, I know I probably stepped in the gun, or overshoot in the gun, but has anybody looked at what the cost savings is versus how the, we're doing it now versus with the new system? How much money we'd be saving in time and...
What the city is not that good about is tracking time that we spend on things.
I would just imagine that it would be a considerable savings.
And then even the...
Yeah. I think the accuracy. I mean, not missing a bid or not, somebody saying, well, you didn't get it, I mailed it or did whatever, and you're like...
There may be savings, too, in more competitive bidding, too, with people who can bid it online. So there's, sorry, you could probably track staff time, but there's probably some savings there, too, that would be hard to quantify, yeah.
And it will automatically generate the bid tabs once it's over.
Yeah, oh, awesome.
So now you write down the bids and then they double-check the math and all that kind of stuff. It should all...
So who does that right now?
Departments do it. And a lot of those that are, have a lot of line items, a lot of those are in public works. And they're, and sometimes it's our consultants that actually do it, you know, the engineering firm that did the design, because they do the specifications. This will be a learning process as we implement it, but once you have your, the basic form set up, you can use it again for other, other bids, you know, for vehicles and equipment and, and actually construction contracts. But it gave us some comfort in how many other public entities were using this. And I think they were using it, I think the state legislature just last year authorized electronic bidding. Everybody else was already doing it. But, but that's what, that was part of the impetus for looking, looking into this. Muni code. Carol, do you want to do that one?
Yeah, that's basically an online code management system, so it will help us ensure that we're keeping our codification up to date. It'll, we will be able to see online what changes have been made in the code, which is something that we desperately need, so we can track the history of an issue. It will help us resolve if we're making a change in code here, are there conflicts to that change in other areas of the code, so that it will help us ensure that we're meeting all of our legal requirements about, around codification, yeah.
The next item is software to manage the safety data sheets for basically chemicals and other things that departments use, so they would have them available actually on their phones and have access to them. We haven't really identified a provider for that yet, but we've allowed for that twenty-five hundred for that as an identified need. So those are the additional technology things, in addition to the things we already had in the, on the first two pages. Facility upgrades, and again, this is a preliminary estimate, replacing the public seating here in the council chambers.
Is that upper and lower?
No, that's probably just lower. Just lower.
Yeah.
The upper ones are like historic. I mean, I, I, we wouldn't look at, plus it's not used very often. These are used a lot, yeah.
Councilmember Gordon?
As much as I would love to replace this color, these chairs, can we consider moving that down to a later, if we have three hundred thousand left over? I'd rather see us spend that twenty thousand on seating for the staff, because they're in there more often. It's a safety, it's a health, and I'd rather see their seating updated, because as we see, sometimes we don't have a full audience here. So it's still twenty thousand dollars for seating, but I'd rather see it used on the staff if we can, as opposed to a chamber.
You mean, she means office seats, office seating, improving our office seats.
Has there ever been an ergonomic study done, done with each office area, each individual? It was, you know, when I worked, we did that constantly.
Oh, I don't know, not since I've been here, but...
Yeah. Generally, if departments request replacement of their office chairs, most of the time that's done, or, or we have in the past, at the end, towards the end of the fiscal year, if there's money left, they'll say, oh, can I replace these chairs? So I'm, I'm not sure our chairs are in poor condition.
I'll be glad to do an audit. I just, I think if we have that opportunity, I mean, this is a great idea, and I'd love this to be a showcase up here, especially when we get the rug, but I also want to make sure the staff has what they need to be ergonomically correct.
We can do a little, we can do that. We'll, we'll, we'll check into if, if there are some office chairs that are aged and need some updating for ergonomics. It may not be a large amount, and we could do both.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Having good chairs is positive.
Yeah, and we can couple, maybe, I don't know where we get ergonomic assessments, but maybe we can figure that out, too.
We might be able to find a resource.
Yeah, try Bayer.
Okay.
They've been doing that for years.
I'm sure employees will appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you, Councilmember Gordon.
The next item is a key card entry system for the public safety building, and that's our second one with city hall currently in, in progress. That estimate is two hundred and thirty-three thousand. And then the third one is also the same kind of system for public works. And that one, I've got it noted that that's the main building only. They've got some outlying buildings that seem like they were like sixteen thousand each, and we've kind of reduced that back as the, the main building is probably the key building for security. And then the next two, outdoor security cameras. Parks has identified that for vandalism that occurs in parks. And then police has made the request for, I think, cameras are at key intersections to, to trace vehicles and license plates if, if there's a, an event somewhere. I'm not sure if I know anymore.
There may be other locations, too, that they're, you know, we, we have, what do it, what, is it just, would it be just addressing street crimes in general, or?
Street crimes in general in areas, they might have some of these cameras, and we have some other mobiles as well.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a little, we, we get a lot of damage in parks, vandalism damage. I think this would be a good investment because we do spend a lot of money replacing bathroom stalls, you name it, it's torn up, yeah.
And then the next two items, and they have been requested in the past, but as part of the budget, they always get low priority, but a backup generator for city hall as well as the public works building. Here, the computer systems and that is a concern if the power goes out, and at public works, there's a number of concerns, but one of them is that I, I don't think their gas pumps work.
No, they wouldn't, they wouldn't.
Yeah, I think these have been on the list for a while, haven't they, to be funded, and haven't made the cut?
Wise decisions. This is a way to spend the ARPA.
Is there, I assume, maybe, since it's not on the list, that public safety building already has a backup generator?
I think they do.
Yes, they do, yeah.
Okay.
Does cost seem a little low? Have they been updated lately?
Generally, they, I think they, they try to keep public safety.
I mean, not, not to generate the cost.
The estimates.
The generator, the...
Is this a carryover?
The estimates for the generators, are they pretty current?
Is it a carryover number? Has the number been updated?
Yeah, they are, they are current numbers.
Okay. They seem kind of low for generators.
Now I understand the question, so.
I just spent a couple million dollars on backup generators, so.
Oh, okay.
So this seems like really low.
Not as big.
Private industry.
Yeah, I know the difference, but it still seems really low.
Government bidding.
And then the next section is unlikely to be funded through the regular budget process. The art sculpture for the second in Mulberry Roundabout, they did receive a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, and there's potential additional twenty thousand donation out there, but the estimated cost, including installation, is seventy thousand. So it's, we're, we've proposing to use twenty-five thousand to... So it's, we're, we're proposing to use 25,000 to complete the funding for that. And again, that leverages private donations. This GPS field painter for the soccer complex, and that's been requested the last couple budgets. And it was actually approved in the budget to be used from money earned or in the fund balance for the college search kickoff. And then they had to be canceled, so there was no money there for it. But that's 45,000. I think that's a good budget number. The, from what they tell me, if you can lay out the lines where you want it, you set the equipment down, no staff needs to be, needs to operate it. So it would save some probably seasonal or full-time hours doing that.
Yeah, Rich said it has about a six, five to six-year life of the equipment, and it'll pay itself off in one to two years.
Great. Wow, that's amazing. Technology.
And then the library requested a flag pole to display the flag out front. And so that's been included for 8,000.
Wow. Sorry. That seems like a lot of money to put a flag pole in.
We have a quote for it. It might include some landscaping around it, too. That's probably the case.
And this is more probably commercial grade as opposed to residential.
Yeah. I mean, I'm happy to share the quote with council if you want to know what's included.
Ironically, I can't seem to install one for less than 10, so...
They see you coming, don't they, Jeff?
I think they do.
Less than $10?
I'll have to bring John with me next time.
Fire Department, I think just this last year, requested shipping containers that they can use for live fire training. And that is likely not to be approved in a regular budget. So we have that, got that as proposed for funding.
And where would those be housed? Do they not, do they, do you have any, I shouldn't be asking this, I guess, but...
They'd probably be down at Station Two, probably maybe even on that armory property. Yeah.
They've also requested a camera system for the Public Safety Building parking lot, the former Come and Go. I guess there's been some addition, some situations of vandalism there.
Oh, gee.
Or people going out in, it's not that light out. So they have requested a camera system for that lot. And then in last year's budget, the Parks Department did request funds for the cemetery chapel improvements. And that's grinding, tuck pointing, and sealing the exterior. That building's on the National Register, and so things have to be done according to their requirements. And if it's identified as a need, if you delay it too much further, it could get worse. So that's why that's been proposed. And then the next one is, as I mentioned before, 300,000 if we need it to balance the FY '24 budget. And then we're down to infrastructure improvements. And those are kind of placeholder numbers. Now, they could be increased if we have extra funding. One of them, and I think Folium Avenue is one of the top priority street improvements. And Public Works had tentatively proposed to, trying not to say, divert money from the $1 million street program every year in order to get that done in three years, I think is what they were proposing. And if we use part of the ARPA funds for that, it likely can be done in two years. And then not take money from other full-dep patch or resurfacing projects. And there's additional funding for substandard housing demolitions. We did bond 200,000 for that, but they've identified quite a number of properties that could be, likely should be demolished. And that would speed up that program. And then additional funding for new sidewalks. So those are identified as kind of infrastructure projects to be used with the balance of the funds. And again, some of these prices, costs are tentative. And it may be that we don't need the 300, or all of the 300,000 in the current fiscal year for the general fund, and 300,000 in FY '24. But I think it's fine to have funds that we can still do things with if you choose to do them. The, and actually, part of the literature when the ARPA funds came out, it kind of discouraged people from spending it all right away. It's like it's out there till the end of '24. You can spread it out and use it through '24. And we won't have any trouble spending it. Staff has never had trouble spending money before, so... And even more towards demolitions, or more towards Folium, that type of thing. So this is our brainstorming list. It's not everything departments wanted, but it, using those kind of categories helped us kind of refine and make the recommendations. Questions?
At the bottom, at the bottom of the page, the Clerk House elevator, how old is that elevator? I'm just curious.
It's probably original with the building in, I think...
It's 70s, late 70s?
76?
Yeah.
76, that, 70, right, late 70s. And they've spent money on it, but it's, it's a concern. Some of the, ideally HUD funding or other federal funding should maintain it, not things that could be used for this. But it was identified as a need. So we did footnote it. They do have some funding that's probably available. They've got a relatively good fund balance. And they do get capital funds allocations from HUD every year. They couldn't divert all of that to this project. So it wouldn't be the full, if it is the 750,000, it wouldn't be the whole thing that they would need. But we wanted to identify it, but we're not quite ready to add it to the list yet.
And I'm guessing that's multiple bids for that, then, or is that...
Yeah, it would be HUD bidding requirements.
Okay, gotcha.
I think it's pretty critical, though.
Yeah, 1976.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
I think there's a lot of great stuff on there. I think we're using the funds wisely.
So I'll go back to the original question. Does City Council have any questions, comments on the expenditure on the first tranche of ARPA funds allocated to the city?
Last year, the request was around 2 million total, too, wasn't it?
It's the, each tranche is like 1.76, you know, and we budgeted 1.712 kind of thing.
Pretty close to that.
Anything? And then, does City Council have feedback on the identified projects to be funded with the second tranche of ARPA funds allocated to the city?
I'll just make my quick comment. I think the hospital needs to be considered again with a little bit of a boost. That's a project that benefits everyone. And so, anyway, nothing's etched in stone, is that right, Carol? That's been talked about tonight?
What's our next step?
Actually, we probably want to get council's endorsement of the list, so people can...
What would you look at adding? Do you have a feel for how much more you'd like to add?
Yeah, I did put a fair amount of thought into it.
Okay.
Looking through things. I think we should give them another 100 grand.
Okay.
I believe the county, what was the county's contribution? And I didn't mean to get into...
Oh, it's okay. That's what we're here for.
...about this tonight. I'm not under the impression that, you know, these expenditures are, have been voted on or, like I say, are definitive. I think they're all good, you know, that type of thing. But I think there should be room for another $100,000 to our community hospital, where we need to have our mothers having their babies here in this town, you know? So I think council, hopefully respectfully submitted. I hope council will, you know, think about that.
Would tonight be the night to ask for a consensus, then?
Yeah, I mean, I think we want to walk away from here with an endorsement of the list. So if that's the will of council, we'll add that, and we'll do some, look at what could be, you know, taken off the list, or, you know, what do we wait on to see if we need the other funds to balance the budget? Do you have a feel for that?
So what's the consensus for adding $100,000 going towards the hospital?
I guess I'm just asking, are they, are they looking for it? Are they, are they short on their funds right now?
I think they're still short funding. I can, I think so. I can, I'll double-check that, and we can do it on contention.
I think inflation is, you know, a couple, inflation is, you know, taking its toll there on that and that type of thing, too. And then considering some of the contributions from some of the other entities, I was just thinking, did the county give eight, like 800,000?
800,000.
Pardon me?
800.
Yeah.
But they had 8 million in ARPA funds.
Yeah, they had quite a bit more than us.
They had a lot more ARPA than we do.
Yep. No confrontation about that or anything. I just, I think we should have room for 100,000 to the hospital.
It is in the top three of, you know, why people want to move to Muscatine, by the way, just so you know. I think it'd be extremely important. How about over here? Consensus? Peggy, Angie?
You know, you don't want to say no. I'd rather see it come out of, I don't want to lose any of the other projects.
No.
I just want to say that fund that we have to help balance the budget, maybe that's reduced a little.
Yeah.
Because we didn't use it last time. So it's a great cause.
Okay, so we'll look at how we might add additional 100,000 to the hospital while still funding most of these other items. If there's, if we can accomplish it, we'll, I'll circle back to council about what might be removed. But I think, you know, this is on council's strategic plan, community health. So I think it's a, it's a fair and reasonable request.
And is the consensus that everybody's okay with all the projects that were...
I said fair and reasonable request.
Is everybody, is everybody okay with identified projects for the ARPA funds? Good, thumbs up? All right. Perfect. Thank you so much, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Councilmember Lewis, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
I do not believe so. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Hopkins. Councilmember Gordon?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Brockert?
I'll follow the rest of my colleagues. Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
I'd just love to see the chamber beat last year's hotel motel tax sales this year. It's going to be a challenging year, but I'll throw that down there.
Perfect. Cinda? See you, Mr. Erwin. All right, I'm good, too. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.